Okay, so right. It's time to start the session. So good morning, good afternoon and good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for taking part in our special session titled Let's Talk About Avoidable Deaths: Views from Multiple Sectors. My name is Hideyuki Shiroshita. I am one of the president of Avoidable Deaths Network, we call it ADN. And I am also an associate professor at Kansai University in Japan. First of all, on behalf of ADN, I would like to express our sincere gratitude to this Gorilla Conference organizer for giving us this great opportunity to run this special session today. So we acknowledge that this session is only this special session in this conference. So we are very honored to have this session in this important conference. As we ADN is a team, I would like to introduce some of team members of ADN who are in charge of this special session. At first, I would like to introduce our regional coordinator in Uganda, Dr. Yazid Bhamtade from Macaledu University. Because of Dr. Bhamtade, this special session came off. So thank you very much for his great support. Today, we have three chairs, Nibedita Amarite. Okay, so three chairs in this session. So they are founding president of ADN, Dr. Nibedita Ray Bennett from the University of Leicester, United Kingdom, and Dr. Ambika Nanda. Where is Dr. Ambika? I can't...
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi.
Right. Yeah, thank you very much. Dr. Nanda is one of the advisory board members of ADN, and he is currently working as the head of CSR of Tata Steel in Odisha in India. In addition, I also chairing this session. Okay. And then I'd like to introduce our operational manager, Mrs. Dennis Kosel. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
This is the timekeeper of this session as well. And also Mr. Antara Lagini is National Research Coordinator in India. She is presenting this session with Dennis. Right. So the session, of course, we have, you know, another other members as well, but because of the time limitation, so sorry, I can't introduce all of the members today. This session lasted two and a half hours, so we hope you all are attending the whole session today. So before we move on to the Dr. Bhamtade's speech, let us explain the housekeeping rules. So during sessions, we are recording. If you would like not to be recorded, please kindly turn off your video. And in order to avoid making unintentional noises, please mute your microphone during sessions. As for timekeeping of the presentation, I would like to give over to Dennis. So Dennis, could you kindly explain the timekeeping rule, please?
Yes, hello, everyone. I'm the operations manager for ADN. I will be the timekeeper today, as Hidjuki has mentioned. So when it is about five minutes to go towards the end of your session, I will be sending the speakers a personal message just as a pop-up on the screen. There should not be too interference with your presentation. No one else will see it other than yourself. When it gets to two minutes left to go, I will be dinging a bell. So if you could listen, this is what the bell will sound like. Yeah, everyone can hear that wonderful. So that's why we'll be doing for two minutes. And then if you run over two minutes, unfortunately, we will have to interrupt you because we have two and a half hours. We have to stick to this time. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Dennis. So now I'd like to move on to welcome speech by Dr. Bhamtade. Bhamtade, some please.
Yes, thank you very much, Hideyuki. Thank you very much, Nibedita. Thank you very much, everyone, who has contributed to realizing this special session of the Gorilla Conference, which is entitled Let's Talk About Avoidable Deaths: Views from Multiple Sectors. I send you greetings from all the people present here in Kampala for the today's conference. It has been extremely successful beyond what we had anticipated. Of course, bearing in mind COVID-19 challenges here and there, but we have quite a lot of participation from people from Uganda, people from Europe, some few people from Asia who managed to come and attend. Just to give you a little bit of insights or situating this talk within the broader context of the conference. Of course, we made announcements for submission of abstracts. And there was a massive, massive contribution of abstracts in the area of hazards as well as disaster risk management to the tune of approximately 40 which we have submitted. And what I have realized from those conversations, situating them in the discussions we are having today is that there is this dynamic which has always been there when you are looking at disasters, when you are looking at hazards. The dynamic has obviously been altered with the new challenge of COVID-19 that we are going to start looking at a combination of multiple hazards that are inducing risks from all areas. What I have also noted is that within what we are trying to do, there is a very huge demand for data that can inform both science and policy. We have people participating in the conference here from multiple organizations. And still, issues of science informing solutions at the lowest level or at the lowest scale is still critical. And these are issues which I think ADN is committed to address through bringing various perspectives, through bringing various geographies, experiences, and the like to address. So I can only say that we need to optimize the opportunity we have today, but not only today, to see how we can continue these conversations time and again to make ourselves more relevant. Of course, understanding that today globally, we are challenged to make a significant contribution to the issues in the global development agenda. So I'm hoping that we can take the conversations forward. Unfortunately, I'll not be fully available for the two hours for the obvious reasons that I'm still running this conference, but it's a pleasure for me to be here with you, to make a contribution, but to also hear the perspectives of other people. Many of the colleagues available here, let me say some of them would also be able to join. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you very much, Bhamtade Sam. Thank you. Now, okay, let me, let move on to my presentation. Okay, right. Yes, so let me introduce ADN as I think most of participant new to ADN. So let me share the screen. Right. Okay, now, so let me introduce the Avoidable Deaths Network, ADN, very briefly. So as I mentioned, I am a president of ADN and I'm also associate professor at Kansai University. Right, so this is about ADN. So ADN is a diverse dynamic, inclusive and innovative global membership network dedicated to avoiding human deaths from natural hazards, naturally triggered technological hazards and human-made disaster in low and middle income country mainly. Because, you know, to the president of ADN from UK and Japan, so we are covering not only, you know, low and middle income countries, but also high-income country as well. And then ADN contributes to the achievement of their target of the United Nations Sustainable Goal, SDGs, and the Sendai Framework for DLR 2015 to 2013. So the idea of Avoidable Deaths is originally from Nibedita's monograph titled Avoidable Deaths, which is published in 2017 or 15? Yes, sorry, 2015. Yes, and the Avoidable Deaths are the amenable and the preventive deaths due to advancement in disaster management science and disaster risk governance, increase sophistication in human, both environment and ongoing economic and policy development worldwide. So this is our, you know, how to say, kind of the core idea of Avoidable Deaths. So the Avoidable Deaths Network, ADN, is first launched on... Sorry, in March 192019 in Kyoto during the conference called Fourth Summit of Global Alliance of Disaster Research Institute. It is short called GADRI. So this was done during the side event titled The Future Leaders for Risk Crisis Disaster and Development Management. So this is one of our, you know, ongoing project as well. So here, I just would like to, you know, explain, you know, the common misunderstanding about ADN. So many people believe ADN is an NGO, but this is not true. Actually, ADN is not an NGO. ADN is an international network led by the University of Leicester and Kansai in Japan. And then some people also say becoming ADN affiliate needs something special. No, it is open to individuals, also the organizations as well. So anyone can join ADN, just Google Avoidable Deaths Network. So we are open to everyone. Okay. So this is, you know, today's session, the information which I just made. So today, we have around 100 registered participants from 25 countries, including India, Uganda, UK, Bangladesh, et cetera. And then I made a map about participants. So, you know, the color shows, you know, the country which has a participant. So I think the biggest group is India. So around 30 registered participants are from India. And the second largest group is, I think, the UK, the United Kingdom. I think more than 10 registered participants we have. So yes, yeah, this is just to, you know, a very brief introduction of ADN. And then I would like to move on to the next one. So, right. Yes, yeah, here, I would like to ask all the participants to take part in our poll. We are going to have polls twice during this session. The purpose of the poll is instantly evaluating our session. So we will ask same question twice and compare the result. We would like to do the first poll now. So and at the later stage, we will do the second poll. So your participation is highly appreciated. So let me do the poll now. Okay, now you will see the pop-up window of the poll. Right. Okay, so please kindly answer just two questions. Right.
Has everybody managed to vote?
I think, yeah, still, yeah, people are voting, I think, yeah.
Still voting?
Yeah. Let wait 30 seconds more. Right. Okay, let me close voting now. Is it okay or...? Okay, yes.
So it's not 100% yet. There are 32 participants, 27 has voted.
Yeah, so 84. What do you think? Should we wait or...?
Maybe another, another five. So we have got about what, seven? Yeah, three seconds.
Three seconds.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should stop now.
Okay.
So it has increased by 87%, so okay.
Yeah, okay. So now, okay, let me share the result with the poll to the participant. Okay, this is the result. So, yeah, more than half of the participants have, you know, prior knowledge on avoidable deaths. And they also, hmm, okay, very confident. Right, okay, this is the result. So we are looking forward to see how the results will change, you know, after the session. So now time to give, give over to Nibedita. Thank you for listening. Okay.
Thank you, Hideyuki. And thank you, Dr. Yazid Bhamtade, for giving us this opportunity to talk at the Gorilla Conference. Now, hello, everyone, wherever you are in the world. My name is Nibedita Ray Bennett, and I am one of the founding presidents of the Avoidable Deaths Network. I'm also an associate professor of risk management at the University of Leicester School of Business. Thank you for joining us today for this special session entitled Let's Talk About Avoidable Deaths: Views from Multiple Perspectives. Now, I would like to talk to you about my work with the Avoidable Deaths Network and also introduce our esteemed panel of guests, speakers. Our first speaker is Professor Prabhat Jha, the founding director of the Centre for Global Health Research in Toronto. Professor Jha is also our keynote speaker for this session. The second speaker is Mr. Gauri Shankar, the founding director of Kalinka Centre for Rainforest Ecology and Kalinka Foundation in India. Our third speaker is Mr. Gautkot Simon Kai, the technical coordinator for Disaster Risk Reduction Unit at the African Union Commission. Our fourth speaker is Ms. Ashley Wolfington, the interim director of humanitarian programs at the International Plant Parentood Federation's New York office. And finally, our last speaker is Dr. Afzana Khan, the deputy program manager of National Malaria Elimination and AIDS Transmission Disease Control Program for the Ministry of Health and Family Welfare's Doctored General of Health Services in Bangladesh. A big thank you to our speakers for their willingness to speak at this special session. We have invited our panel of experts whose expertise crosscuts several disciplines, including public health, epidemiology, sexual and reproductive health, disaster risk reduction, and biology. And all of them, through their pioneering research and practice, are dedicated to avoidable deaths. So, Antara, we can go to the second slide, please. I would like to give an insight into how each speaker's work intersects with the work of the Avoidable Deaths Network. I will begin with providing a brief context of the special session and of my work. I started my research monograph in 2012 with a question. Why do people die in disasters? When I submitted my monograph for review, I proposed two working titles. One of them was Avoidable Deaths. The review was like the title very much. At the time, I was using the term avoidable deaths to make a case for effective governance through early warning systems, interdepartmental coordination, communication, and accommodation of subjective worldviews of actors to avoid disaster deaths. When my monograph was in the press in 2017, one day, I was advised by my husband to listen to a BBC Radio 4 program on avoidable deaths and excess deaths. I found that discussion gripping. After listening to the program, I did a Google search to find out more about avoidable deaths. During that process, I came across the Office for National Statistics in the UK, which keeps record on avoidable deaths. This set me on a new journey of learning. Also, I thought, why don't we, the Avoidable Deaths Network community, all learn together on this journey? Hence, we are here today at the Gorilla Conference. We will be running special sessions on avoidable deaths in 2020. Several sessions will be running. Our next stop for the second special session will be in Japan in March 2021. Please keep an eye on our Facebook for updates. So we will be crossing continents, countries, and crossing disciplines in the search for learning to improve our practice. This will be a journey of learning about avoidable deaths. This will be a journey of listening to experts from different disciplines who are passionate about the concept of avoidable deaths. And this will also be a journey of transferring our learning to the domain of disaster risk reduction, my home subject. In 2015, the United Nations Office for Disaster Risk Reduction launched the global framework called the Sendai Framework for Disaster Risk Reduction. This is a sister protocol of the Sustainable Development Goals. The Sendai Framework has set seven global targets. And the first two targets are, number one, to reduce disaster deaths, and number two, to reduce the number of people affected by disasters by 2030. Mr. Gautkot Kai, the technical coordinator for Disaster Risk Reduction Unit at the African Union Commission, will touch upon these targets and tell us of progress made so far and the challenges that lay ahead in Africa. Along with avoidable deaths, I also started investigating indirect deaths from disasters. Indirect deaths are those caused by unsafe or unhealthy conditions that occur because of the disaster. These conditions include the loss or disruption of essential services, personal loss, and disruption of an individual's lifestyle. While searching for research methods to capture and estimate indirect deaths, I came across Professor Prabhat Jha, the founding director of the Centre for Global Health, landmark Million Deaths Study, one of the largest studies in the world. The Million Deaths Study used verbal autopsies to study premature deaths. Verbal autopsies are structured interviews conducted by non-medical field workers and then evaluated by trained clinical physicians to ascertain the cause of death. Professor Prabhat Jha and Dr. Afzana Khan, the deputy program manager for the Ministry of Health and Welfare in Bangladesh, will tell us more on verbal autopsies and its usefulness in developing countries where most deaths take place at home with no medical certification of causes of death. Mr. Gauri Shankar, the founding director of Kalinka Foundation and Kalinka Centre for Rainforest Ecology, will tell us about snake-biter deaths, especially during the rainy season in India. Our ADN's regional coordinator for India, Mr. Dilip Apnayak, brought to our attention that deaths from snake bites were second only to flood-related deaths according to the annual report of ORISA in 2019. Now, I hadn't been unaware of this, despite carrying out research in ORISA since 1999 into disaster-related deaths. So we are privileged today to have Mr. Gauri Shankar, who will share his vast experiences of snakes and snake bites. Another category of disaster death that is not frequently talked amongst the disaster-reduction community is maternal mortalities and morbidities during disasters. The International Plant Parentood Federation have led the field in research into maternal deaths and morbidities during humanitarian crisis. The interim director, Ms. Ashley Wolfington, will talk to us about the preventative strategies that International Plant Parentood Federation uses to avoid deaths during humanitarian crisis. Antara, yeah, thank you. The classification of which deaths are regarded as avoidable or unavoidable has shifted over the course of the 20th century to the 21st century. Advances in public health, medicines, social sciences, social policies, and the sophisticated human built environment have all played a crucial role in the prevention of avoidable deaths. Maternal deaths, deaths from TB, malaria for other infectious diseases and deaths from the animals like snakes were unavoidable deaths at some point in time, but they are avoidable now. This duality of avoidability and unavoidableity at the interface of time and context is quite a fascinating aspect of the concept of avoidable deaths. The concept of avoidable deaths was first conceived in 1970 by a little-known British general practitioner called Dr. John Mansfield. And you can see the cover page of the book on the slide. According to Mansfield, especially a vast number of premature deaths are avoidable in two senses. Firstly, in avoidance of factors which are both within man and woman's control and which are harmful. Secondly, in the early detection and treatment of diseases. Mansfield also identified three main parties who make decisions concerning avoidable death. And they are, first, the individual, second, the medical professional, and the government. The concept of avoidable deaths was then popularized by the Preventable and Manageable Diseases Working Group led by Rushtham and his colleague in 1976 at Harvard University. Rushtham and his colleagues developed outcome measures for health services by counting cases of unnecessary disease and disability and unnecessary untimely deaths as measures of the quality of medical care. Although the sequence of events leading up to avoidable disease or deaths of an individual can however be complex, they are identifiable. For example, a case of depereia may be a consequence of failure by a government to introduce the necessary legislation to promote or fund immunization programs. Could be the health service managers to implement such programs. A doctor to immunize patients. Could be the parents who didn't take their baby to a clinic because it was too far away or because of the family's religious views. The concept of avoidable deaths makes it clear who is responsible to avoid deaths and how can they be prevented. This level of clarity is often lacking in disaster risk reduction and disaster management studies. There is a lack of clarity on the services that we are supposed to receive from disaster management systems in many low and middle income countries. There is a lack of clarity in regard to who is responsible to preventing avoidable deaths from floods, cyclones, famines, or even snakes. Is it the individual? Is it the emergency services? Or is it the local government? It is timely. We seek clarity on these issues to improve practice. We seek clarity on these issues to improve practice. I feel strongly that the concept of avoidable death can be a way forward to bring clarity in the disaster management system. The concept of avoidable death has the potential to develop the capacity of disaster management actors, drive efficiency and improve quality of service in low and middle income countries. And above all, the concept can also lead to value, not only the actual number of lives saved, but also the value of these saved lives. So, thank you very much with this note. So, I will now invite Dr. Ambika Prasad Nanda, our ADN advisor, and he is chairing the first session for Professor Prabhavat Jha. Thank you very much, guys. So, Ambika, hi, over to you.
Thank you, Nibhavita. And so, all my humanitarian researchers across the countries. A very good evening from India. I think the narratives about death has been very minimal in all our research until unless Nibhavita would have started it to keep the issue alive. When there is death in any family, we mourn for some days. And it varies from country to country. But a death of an unknown person is just a number for many of us as researchers or as policymakers. But then we discuss about it. If it's a big disaster, we discuss it for some time. And after that, it goes to oblivion. But this research and research by Nibhavita and especially this Avoidable Deaths Network Initiative by Hidjuki and Nibhavita and the colleagues from University of Leicester is keeping this issue alive that if death is unwarranted and we must celebrate life on this earth and it's all our responsibility. Having said this, friends, I would like to share just briefly about myself. My name is Ambika Prasthatnanda. Currently, I am with Tata Steel as the head of CSR. We do engagement with the communities to address their poverty-related issues and promote their rights on various issues. And before that, I have worked extensively on the disaster management with UNDP and international organisations. My experience has been if our advocacy is backed by research and evidence, the arguments become very strong in terms of before the policymaker to come up with policy changes. And if you see today what ORISA, which is a state in India, has done something significantly in terms of disaster risk reduction to save lives. Because it has been the contribution of all of you, all the humanitarian brothers and sisters. You have contributed significantly in promoting the rights of the people who are in fragile geographic situation and always vulnerable to disasters. I take this, this is a wonderful topic and we all need to discuss and reflect about it and do our part in bringing truth before the policymakers. It gives me immense pleasure to introduce our keynote speaker, Professor Prabhavat Jha, who is just not an individual, who is an institution in himself. And when you talk about studies about one million deaths, I think as researcher, I also come from academic background. When you do our research, we take hundred, two hundred or thousand samples. And Professor Jha had the courage to collect data and what Nibhavita does is verbal autopsy of million deaths through more than nine. I think Professor Jha is a name. And especially on the tobacco control treaty has been signed by more than 180 countries. He has worked with World Health Organisation and World Bank. It also gives me immense pleasure that he is an origin of India. And I'm thinking of humanity to save lives. I think all these words, I would invite Professor Prabhavat Jha to have a sharing. Over to you, Professor Jha, please.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation. And again, congratulate the Avoidable Mortality Network for identifying a very important set of topics. So, let me start by, oh, the host has to enable me to share the screen. Whoever that is.
Please. I think we are supposed to make all the presenters as hosted.
I may, I may.
Sorry, Professor Jha, thank you.
Can you see the slides now?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. So, let me start. I'll just remove one few things, excuse me. So, what I'd like to do is walk you through the lessons from the Million Deaths Study and also from emerging work in Sierra Leone and Africa on reliable estimation of the causes of death. And I'll start by giving you my conclusions, which are as follows. Counting the dead and describing causes are essential for future reductions in premature deaths. And I'll give you three examples, child and maternal mortality, malaria mortality and snake bite. And then I'll briefly touch upon the current challenge of quantifying and controlling COVID mortality. So, let's start with a quick quiz, which is, this is a simple graph that shows the percentage survival till age 70 among French men born in 1896. And so, this is very simple. It's all those born and how many were alive by age 70. And from this, you should be able to pick out three out of four key findings, which actually are quite indicative of global health. And those are as follows. First, 20% of those men born were dead before age five. And then of those that reached age 20, a substantial proportion died in young adult life. And that was the effects of World War I. So, these are kind of obvious findings. But less obvious is the fact that very few reached older age. 20% only reached age 70. And that within those that reached middle age, meaning the age 30, fully half had died before age 70. So, the challenge of global health and the challenge of avoidable mortality from a quantitative perspective is simple. How do you reduce deaths so that they're rare in early life and they're not common in middle age? Well, one of the starting points, of course, is to understand what is killing people around the world. So, there are 60 million deaths a year in the world roughly. Thirty-eight million of those are in low and middle income countries but are not registered, meaning they simply have no information on the causes of death. So, for example, in 2010, only 3% of the world's children who died had a proper death certificate. And this is because deaths occur in the rural areas away from medical care and therefore without any information. So, what is the solution to this? Well, one was proposed 140 years ago by the sanitary commissioner of the Government of India, whose quote is before you, argued for sanitary purposes, it is indispensable to know the relative mortality in small areas to ascertain the causes and to apply the remedies. That effectively is the design of the Indian Million Deaths Study 140 years later. So, what we do is work with the Registry General of India within an ongoing demographic system called the Sample Registration System. And this surveys about 1.4 million representative homes drawn from the previous census and sends 900 non-medical staff to these homes. And they collect currently on paper, but they're moving, as you see here, to electronic formats, a simple narrative of the deaths that occurred and a adapted WHO verbal autopsy tool. Those records are converted to electronic format and then sent to anonymously to two of 400 doctors who independently adjudicate the causes of death. And these doctors undergo strict guidelines so that they agree on the causes of death. And the approach is to work with the government, keep costs very low and study all diseases. And this now has formed a frame alliance called Statistical Alliance for Vital Events, which is expanding to African countries and elsewhere. So, how well does the Million Deaths Study results work? Well, a simple metric is that you should have a classifiable cause of death in at least deaths before old age. And sure enough, we see that before. Sorry. Okay, I'll keep going. I presume that was just a glitch. So, before older age, deaths were misclassified 13% of the time before the Million Deaths Study. And that's fallen to 4% and stayed there since. Now, in older age, you have greater problems. Earlier, fully 60% were not classifiable. And that's fallen to 18%, but that continues. And that's a worldwide problem. Quantification of deaths and the causes of death in older ages is more difficult than in before older age. Reassuringly, when we tested the Million Deaths Study and compared whether these non-medical staff got the same answers as medical staff. This was part of a randomized study. So, we asked medical staff four weeks after the verbal autopsy was done by non-medical staff to go and ask the same questions and compare the results. And you see, there's a very strong correlation that the medical staff or non-medical staff are doing just as well. So, what have we found in the Indian Million Deaths Study? Well, basically, everything that you would expect was different or not true when we looked. So, we did document substantially more smoking deaths than expected, substantially more malaria deaths than expected, which I'll show you, but substantially fewer HIV deaths than had been expected. And importantly, every disease that was common in one part of India was rare in another and therefore largely avoidable. So, let me give you the first example, which is neonatal survival. So, when I was a medical student, there was a sign on our obstetrics ward that said, "The first five minutes of life is the most dangerous." And some smart aleck underneath wrote, "The last five aren't so great either." Well, the Million Deaths Study can study right from the first five all the way to the last five. And the particular analysis here, published in The Lancet, was on 100,000 home interviews of families that had lost a child and was able to characterise what were the causes of death and importantly, the trends from 2000 to 2015. And what we documented is in the first month of life, neonatal mortality had fallen substantially for the interventions that government had addressed through increasing facility births. So, neonatal infections fell, birth asphyxia and trauma fell, tetanus also fell. But preterm births or prematurity and low birth weight, mostly comprising term births with low birth weight, actually rose surprisingly. At 1 to 59 months, all of the major infectious causes fell. Let me show you this graphically. So, this is that 1 to 59 months, pneumonia in girls, pneumonia in boys in the blue. And as you see, the gap between girls and boys, which is well noted in India, narrowed over time, both for pneumonia and also for diarrhoea, shown in the orange. In contrast, in neonatal period, there was substantial improvement in utile infections and birth asphyxia trauma, but not in term births with low birth weight. So, what's going on? Well, one thing to understand by avoidability is to look within India. And this is the national trends showing rising term births with low birth weight. But that was concentrated in rural areas and in the poorer states. In the urban areas and the richer states, there actually was continued improvement. So, this points to avoidability. And subsequently, the Indian government now has set up a group to investigate why my term births have not come down because they're not as amenable to emergency obstetric services. It might in fact reflect factors such as maternal tobacco chewing during pregnancy. So, what about maternal mortality? Well, the good news is that Indian maternal mortality deaths from 1997 to 2020 have fallen about 70%. Still, about 1.3 million women died during childbirth during this time period. The good news is now the annual total, which used to be about 100,000, is down to 24,000 and continues to decrease. And India is on target to meet the Sustainable Development Goals for 2030 for maternal mortality. However, not uniformly. In the poorer states of India, which are in the north and the northeast, maternal mortality risks are notably higher. So, this adjusts for education and some other differences. And for example, differences in female literacy and in neighbourhood income. And here you see a substantially higher concentrated mortality in the rural areas of particular states and in the tribal belt that intersects many states. So, almost all of the maternal deaths are concentrated in certain areas. That also is then the option, that creates the options for doing more interventions. So, let me turn to malaria, which is an important but generally neglected causes of death. So, this is our paper from 2010. And the conclusions were as follows. First, malaria deaths should not occur. It's not just a disease that you can properly diagnose and treat. You can actually cure malaria. But India, according to our estimates, in 2005 had 200,000 avoidable malaria deaths. The large proportion, which were occurring not in children but beyond ages five, five to 69. And this suggested the WHO total has to be reconsidered. So, of the malaria deaths before age 70, was there 200,000. 90% occurred in rural areas and about 90% occurred outside a health facility. And we saw a U-shaped pattern where malaria death rates were high, not just in children, but also in adults and increasing with age. By contrast, the World Health Organisation estimates found only malaria as a cause of child deaths, but not much in adults. So, why these differences? Well, malaria is a disease that can be cured. But the WHO definition is to have only those cases that have a proper diagnosis, meaning a microbiological diagnosis of malaria. But because you can diagnose malaria, you can actually cure it. So, you get this curious thing of you can either be a case and then get cured or you can be a fatality, which means that it occurs outside of the health system. But you don't, you're not recorded as a case because you simply don't have biologic confirmation of infection. So, this pattern has persisted over time. Those were 2005 data shown in the red. And 2015 shows a reduction in child mortality from malaria. But still, this U-shaped pattern that persists. And our estimate is the overall numbers of 0 to 69 deaths now is down to about 134,000. Still a substantial burden. And that burden is concentrated in the states where malaria is more common. So, 100,000 occurred just in the eastern and northeastern states of India. How do we know this is malaria? Because we don't have biologic confirmation. Well, we looked at indirect evidence. And the first was, what is the geographic distribution of our malaria deaths? And separately, the National Malaria Programme has clinically confirmed malaria deaths. But because these are very few, they only had 5,000 over about a five-year period, then these obviously represent people who got mostly cured and treated. But nonetheless, the geographic concentration is very similar. Going further, when we looked at the small areas, as shown on the left, where malaria deaths occurred and compared them to the small areas in which malaria phalciprom or phalciprom plasmodium phalciprom malaria occurs, you see a striking geographic correlation. By contrast, the diseases that might be confused with malaria, such as dengue and other conditions, do not occur in the same distribution as malaria. So, meningitis, for example, has this distribution, whereas malaria will have a northeastern and eastern distribution. And similarly, tightly. And similarly, typhoid is more concentrated in the south of India. So this suggests that there are large numbers of acute fever deaths in rural areas that really untreated and unattended and caused deaths, acute fever causing deaths. And as shown here in Orissa, which has much active malaria, there are forty-three percent of these acute fever deaths in adults were due to malaria. That is a greater proportion than the whole of India. And then the question is, well, is this misclassified other causes? Well, not entirely, because it might well be that some of these diseases reflect other causes. But it also would suggest that some of the other causes are actually malaria deaths. Now, the good news out of all of this is despite incredible controversy in India on these results, the Indian government has taken malaria very seriously. And in recent years, there's been a substantial decline in reported malaria deaths in Orissa and the surrounding states. Now, this finding of a U-shaped relationship is something we've also seen in recently in Africa. So these are new results from Sierra Leone with a very similar system of the million deaths study that showed a U-shaped relationship, much steeper in children than in India. But in absolute numbers, there are as many malaria deaths above age five all the way to age seventy as there are below age five. And a similar finding was noted in Mozambique in a verbal autopsy survey in two thousand seven and in a comparison of a variety of demographic household sites in Africa called the In-Death Network and National Studies. So you see this U-shaped relationship. There is a striking correlation between childhood malaria deaths and adult malaria deaths that suggests that while WHO has accepted verbal autopsy for childhood malaria, they have been less, or they've been more reluctant to accept it for adult. But there's a very strong correlation. And it does suggest that adult malaria is a significant cause of deaths in not just in India, but also in Africa. But this is a really controversial, controversial finding. And many credible malarriologists have taken us on and said, no, they just don't believe these results. So these are results from Nick White's group showing that they thought that verbal autopsy, that there were very few malaria deaths after age fifty. But you see, curiously, they also record substantial number of malaria deaths before age fifty and then a sudden drop. So what's going on here? Is this all air in the verbal autopsy? We conclude that it's not. Is it suggests that we need to rethink the dogma that there's lifelong immunity after falciparum or VIVAX infection, perhaps? Is there another infection that's also vector borne? So these can be only investigated further in reliable blood-based studies, which are now underway in Sierra Leone and other settings. Let me turn in the last part to snake bites. So our findings in two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven said that in the million deaths study, there were about fifty thousand snake bites a year. That was the World Health Organization's worldwide total at that time. And to credit to WHO, what they did is they changed their worldwide estimate to about a hundred thousand. And more importantly, they put snake bites on the list of neglected tropical diseases that could be subject to further action and have called on a halving of global snake bite deaths by twenty thirty. If that's going to occur, it would need to occur predominantly in India because India now is, accounts for perhaps more than fifty percent of global snake bite deaths. So a more recent paper in E Life Sciences examined the twenty-year trends in snake bites. And we documented about one point two million deaths, about fifty-eight thousand a year. Half of these snake bite deaths occurred in the monsoon months and half at low altitude. And seventy percent occurred in eight states. And in those states, the overall risk of death from snake bites, lifetime risk, or excuse me, death risk before age seventy, was overall for the country, one in two hundred and fifty. But in some places, shown in the dark red, that risk was one percent. So it's a one percent, one percent lifetime chance of dying from snake bites in areas. And from the snake bite deaths, we were able to figure out using case fatality rates, approximately, an approximate total of between one to two million snake bites occur a year. And this has now been given to the Indian government and a snake bite network in, in India to help of plan the strategies that could avoid snake bite deaths. The key strategies would involve prevention, very basic things like having boots in the wet months and use of torches or even cellphone lights at night. And making sure that antivenom treatment matched to the diverse species of India is widely available. So it is possible that snake bite deaths could be halved from fifty-eight thousand to perhaps twenty-five or even lower thousand by twenty thirty. Let me turn finally to COVID and the challenge of COVID. Well, as you've seen, there's extraordinary variation, at least in the first viral wave, in the COVID death rates per million across countries. So within Europe, the Belgian rate was, which is shown in the top line, was something like almost six times that of Germany. An extraordinary variation across countries. And even within the US, in the first viral wave, extraordinary variation. And this needs to be understood as to what this is pointing to for evidence of avoidability. In almost all of the settings, what has happened is a large increase in mortality for a few weeks followed by a decline. So these are data from Peru that show that compared to the previous years, where mortality rates were reasonably flat, there was a big excess of total deaths, most of which were COVID and followed by a decline. And the main concern is Peru and Brazil and other settings, and probably India similar, have had an increase but have had a persistence, meaning they carry on. They don't come all the way down, which suggests onward or ongoing transmission. And these are the patterns you see, for example, in Ecuador, in Manaus, Brazil. And Brazil certainly in Manaus has had a second peak corresponding to the second viral wave. So in places where we can study these causes in greater detail, for example, in the UK or in England, Richard Pedo has examined what were the excess deaths and found very much that the excess was concentrated in nursing homes and was not just due to COVID, where it was reported on the death certificate, but where even it was not. But very much the excess was temporally related to the COVID pandemic. So what does this mean? Well, the implications for developing countries for COVID mortality monitoring are very simple. I believe every urban area of the world does keep track of some basic statistics on daily or weekly death totals. Fewer do causes of death, but they should release the daily or weekly death totals and compare them against the twenty eighteen, nineteen averages. It's a very simple way of knowing whether you're flattening the curve. In India, there was unfortunately a, a large outmigration due to the lockdown that occurred in March. And as a result, the migrant populations have moved out to rural areas. So in those rural areas, there might be hidden COVID deaths. And for that, what is needed is to do the verbal autopsy. Unfortunately, the Indian government has not done the million deaths study since two thousand fourteen. And therefore, we don't have any contemporary mortality statistics. The third strategy is also a very simple one, is there are mortuaries in very various parts. It would be a very simple strategy to do a simple PCR swab of the dead. Just take all of the dead that come through a random sample and swab them. And you'll get some sense of whether they had COVID. And finally, it's really important to know the denominator of infected populations. And this is where reliable antibody studies do need to be done. So one such study, which we hope to release the results of next week, is in Canada called the Action to Beat Coronavirus. And this involves getting about fifteen thousand Canadians randomly selected. And we sent them a home kit where they did a finger prick, put five drops of blood and mailed it back to us. And we tested the results. And this was able to determine antibody levels in Canada. So I've given you a lot of statistics and I apologize. You know, the criticism of epidemiologists is that we're pure number crunchers like accountants. That's not quite true. Accountants have more personality than epidemiologists. But I hope I've convinced you that the reliable quantification of deaths and the counting of the dead and the causes is key to future reductions in premature mortality and in fact into taking on COVID mortality. If you'd like more information, please do visit our website, CGHR.org. And a variety of books are available, but please don't buy them. There should be all online. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Prapta Ja. Very, very interesting results. And as, as rightly shared, there are many such cases. And one, another cause of even deaths in the developing and underdeveloped countries has been because of the lightning. The global climate change and its impact on the poor people in terms of having access to quality food, nutritious food, has also increased the morbidity in the underdeveloped and developing countries. And lightning is one of the, also a very big killer in, in the eastern part of the country, especially in Odisha, Andhra Pradesh and these states. And it's up to close to some, some countries, some years, it's even higher than the snake bites and natural disasters. So thank you, Prapta Ja, for such information, which would surely big data would really influence the policymakers to come up with the right policies so that probably in our lifetime, we would see less deaths in such cases and because of such reasons. And especially the difference between the deaths with the boys and the girls in the rural and urban areas also sometimes demonstrates the gender relationship and the, and the attention of the policymakers to, and the family members to reduce the risk at, at the family level. So wonderful to have you here. And I think we'll stop the session and over to Nibhuddita and Idikey for the next session. Thank you, Prapta Ja, once again. Wonderful to listen to your speech. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, okay, let's move on to the next speaker. So let me introduce the next speaker. The next speaker is Mr. Golichanka. He is a panda of Kalinga Centre for Rainforest Ecology in India. So Golichanka is a wildlife biologist studying king cobra for close to two decades. He is passing his PhD at North Odisha University and he's a former exchange student at Uppsala University. So he's a Ted Fellow two thousand twenty. So today's, his presentation title is, this, this is in the snake bite capital of the world, India. So Golichanka, please give us your talk.
Thank you, Yoki, and thank you, Nibhuddita, for inviting me for this talk. And it's really a pleasure to be around here. I'm going to share my screen.
Idikey, can we help Mr. Golichanka with this? And Ontra, do you have the slides for Mr. Golichanka?
I, I do have the, I do have the slides. Mr. Shankar, would you like me to share the screen?
No, just tell me, how do I do this? Share the whole thing and then this one?
Yes, now just.
Am I, is it?
Yes, we can see your screen.
Okay.
Just click on your PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Yes, I did. Please open your PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Second.
You want to open it from your desktop, not from the Zoom?
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah. Yes. Now we can see your presentation file.
Okay, thank you. So Professor Pravatja has covered most of the snake bite part along with other avoidable death issue. But so I might avoid few slides, which even I had the similar statistics, but I'm going to avoid, I'm going to talk about rest of the things. So we all know Kofi Annan, the former United Nations Secretary General and spokesman, once told, you know, snake bite is the most important tropical disease you have never heard of. So this is actually true. Professor Ja also mentioned that even in India, the government or most of the bureaucrats, the, the decision makers ignore that snake bite is a major issue. So they still show the numbers are very, very low, but they don't take our statements or our statistics seriously. So globally, Mr. Pravasja already mentioned, so I might skip these numbers. Eighty-one thousand to one lakh, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand is the annual mortality in the globe. And here, very important, the four hundred thousand survival victims suffering permanent physical and psychological disabilities, this is also a major issue. So when you see the annual mortality might be on the hundred and thirty-eight thousand, but more than four thousand, four hundred thousand people are, do survive the snake bite after medical attention, whatever, but they do suffer permanent disability. They might lose a limb. So basically, a farmer, if he loses a hand or a leg, there's no way he can work. So their economy, the family's economy definitely drops. And so this is a serious issue. And India, we already know, there are close to fifty-eight thousand people die every year with the recent study. And I'll skip that one. Yes, so I would, I would point out here, we have close to three hundred species of snakes in India. But ten to twelve percent, that is thirty to forty, are venomous. So again, it's a big problem. India has this issue, they just can't identify the snakes, right? We are good at remembering number of runs made by such in tennis or cricket or films and, you know, lot of Bollywood stories, everything, but just we can't remember the snakes which are venomous and not venomous. So basically, from forty, again, to keep it very simple, we say there are only four medically important snakes, right? It's very easy to identify, they're four different kinds, they look completely different, but people still make a mistake and mistake them to non-venomous and do handle or try to capture them, they get bitten. And those are the spectacled cobra, naja naja, we have four species again. We don't have antivenom for other subspecies or other species in India. So we're just talking about four medically important. There are cryptic species, right now, we're not even talking about that. But these are the four medically important snakes, that's the naja naja, spectacled cobra, daboia rustily, that's the rustles viper on top, and the common grade, which is nocturnal again, bungara cyrillias. And we have sawscale viper, ekis carnitas. So these are responsible for those fifty-eight thousand or sixty thousand deaths in India. So moving on to the next one. So we have one antivenom for all these four venomous snakes. So we are ignoring other subspecies or other cryptic species which are venomous, which do cause fatalities, but we don't have antivenom. Right now, we have only one antivenom, which is polyvalent, which is used for all these four venomous snakes. We did have monovalent, but the problem is identification. So there was a lot of confusion. So the later, we have, now we have polyvalent. So any snake you get bitten, you go to the hospital. And if the doctor recognizes this is an unvenomated case, he will administer antivenom. So that's, that's the biggest problem. I'll come to those issues later. So who are the most affected by snake bites? So ninety-four percent snake bites occur in rural areas, like Professor Ja already pointed out the map, I'm, I'm not using that. So most of them are agricultural workers, the farmers particularly. The farmers, particularly the herders, fishermen, your labor class, people living in really poorly constructed houses. So that also makes a big difference because we breed shelter rats. We breed them in and around houses and we attract snakes into our houses and that's where the human animal conflict is high and people do get bitten right inside their houses. Seventy-seven percent occur outside the hospitals. So people die, they don't even reach the medical centers because of the distance, transportation, roads and availability of antivenom. So, so like I mentioned, so awareness also is very, very important. People don't understand these species, particularly the identification with a venomous, non-venomous, so limited access. When I say education, I'm talking about the awareness regarding the animal they coexist. Yeah. And healthcare, of course. So this is also a concern. The death is increasing. Death rate like fifty-five thousand in two thousand to two thousand fourteen, it's gone up fifty-eight thousand to sixty thousand. So we are looking at a bigger issue because the developmental activities, the smaller villages have become bigger towns, bigger towns are becoming two-tiered towns and a developmental activity is so high, the interaction between the snake and humans are growing. So that's why the numbers also are growing. So look at this. Females, sorry. Like fifty-nine percent males, obviously because of most of the farmers, they work in the field. Forty-one percent females, but this number is gradually, it's becoming fifty-fifty. So the more females also getting bitten by snakes. And look at the age group. Ja already mentioned that seventy-four percent fall between thirty to sixty-nine year old. So this is the prime breadwinning family member. So losing a person like that can have a huge effect on the family's income. And we already know forty-six percent of the bites are from Russell viper and nineteen percent is crate and thirteen percent cobra and unknown. When I say unknown, there are so many other misidentification or people don't even identify them properly. So that's the biggest problem we have. And of course, this, the number, the vipers or crates and crates keep changing according according to the geographical location and the season wise, of course. And time is also very, very important. Twenty-four hours, there is interaction between humans and snakes. Example, six PM to midnight, thirty percent, the Russell's viper, sawscale vipers and your crates are nocturnal. So they are active by evenings, right? And if you see another part, twenty-seven percent, six AM to noon, snakes like cobras and a few other venomous snakes are active in the morning. In dryer zone where the temperature goes up to forty degrees, forty-five degrees, all these snakes like to go foraging at this particular time where even agriculturists also working in the fields. That's the time people get bitten. And this is the major problem. We mentioned again, sixty percent of the population get to the medical facilities in twenty-four hours. That's a long gap. So if it is a proper bite, you don't have that much time. It's anywhere between thirty minutes to one hundred and twenty minutes or sometimes, yes. But look at the number, sixty percent of them don't reach the hospital within twenty-four. And recently, my friends here in the lab close by, my colleagues, they published a paper where they're looking at the venom variation and antivenom efficacy. So it's a big shock that currently marketed antivenom exhibit really poor dose efficacy and there is they hardly recognize non-big four, which I'm talking about. In cobra, we have four different species in India. So these these antivenoms that are present antivenom doesn't even work. The rest of the three cobras and Russell's viper, of course, as of now, we have only one. Sawscale viper, we have two different species, one is a subspecies, it doesn't work. So that's a big shock. And what is WHO is doing to build the capacity for treatment? And of course strengthening the diagnostics tests. So we are also looking at in our friend's lab. So unless we identify the species, it's difficult to provide the antivenom. So that's the biggest issue we have. So we are working in that line. Of course, raise awareness of snake bite rehabilitation, particularly when people get bitten, what to do, what not to do and how to avoid snake bites. These are the things we are focusing at Kalinga Foundation and KCRI. And so, yes, WHO has a very ambitious plan to reduce the snake bite deaths, deaths and disability by fifty percent before two thousand thirty. So I hope with collaboration with different people or government, if it takes seriously, maybe we will achieve this one day, someday. Can't move the slide yet. So one of the the research right now in future, what we are planning is to design the design and preclinical delivery of next generation antivenom, which Pan India, that is which will reduce the snake bite deaths and disability. We need species-specific, dose-effective and affordable. When I say affordable antivenom, antivenom is very, very expensive. If this patient gets bitten and gets into the hospital, we're talking about anywhere hundred thousand rupees to one hundred and fifty thousand rupees. They they have to spend for a snake bite. So this is a major cost. Lot of villagers, agricultures can't afford this kind of treatment. So we are looking into that aspect as well. And of course, in collaboration with ISE, this project is ongoing right now. And other than that, we are trying to reach out to many people by training forest officials who are the ground people working in collaboration with local communities and school kids, children. So wherever we have audience, we try to reach out and communicate about this neglected tropical disease. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. How about Mr. Golichanka? Yeah. So in Japan, in the year, I because I'm not, you know, familiar with the snake bite, so I take the start in order to, you know, get to know about the snake bite. So in Japan, there are some stats say three thousand people are bitten by bypass and
Yeah, bypass.
Yeah, yeah. And one hundred people get bitten by Habu. This is, you know, the snake endemic snake in Okinawa.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but but only a few people died in Japan the year, maybe, you know, less than ten. Yeah. So yeah, honestly, I had not paid attention to snake bite before, you know. I read the World Disaster Report two thousand fourteen, posed by IFRC. But when I read the report, I was very surprised because, you know, in the last century, more than six million people died, killed by the snake bite and one point five million people, you know, by died from earthquake. So snake are four times more dangerous than earthquake, I feel.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Especially your Southeast Asia, South and Southeast Asia and Central America. Australia has more number of venomous snakes, but the number of people dies very, very low because they have antivenom and the treatment is very quick. They reach to the hospital. So it's a big difference here.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much for your very informative, yeah, presentation. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Okay. Do we take questions or is there anyone has any question?
Yes.
Yes.
We we will, we will be, if you have any questions, please post it and then we will and we will pass it on to Mr. Golichanka and Professor Ja as well. And we will post those answers on the website as well because we've been conscious of the time because virtually it is difficult to have everybody's concentration for more than two and a half hours. So please drop your question and we will pick it up. And if we have time, we will request the speakers to answer. Otherwise, we will email your question and that's what we do is and we'll post it on the website. So thank you very much. Idikey, over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, please use the chat window to make a comment or question. Thank you very much. So let's move on to the third speaker. Let me introduce some of his speaker. The third speaker is Mr. Gachkurs Simon Kai. He's a technical coordinator disaster risk reduction in African Union. So Mr. Kai is a disaster risk management expert with over fifteen years of progressive experience in leading several development initiative and life-saving humanitarian intervention on the African continent. And he is also one of the alumni of the MST course of University of Brewster, which which currently Nivedita is leading as a program director. So yes, his presentation title is Progress on Implementation of the Africa Program of Action, POA, for the implementation of Sende Framework for Disaster Risk Reduction, two thousand fifteen to two thousand thirteen. So Mr. Kai, please give us your presentation.
Thank you very much, Professor Idikey, for that humbling introduction. My presentation will base very much on the progress we are making toward the implementation of the Sende framework in Africa. In and in relation to that, I will be narrowing down my presentation to the the mortality, the target dealing with the disaster mortality. So next, please. The African Union adopted the Programme of Action for the Implementation of Sende Framework for Disaster Risk Reduction, two thousand fifteen, two thousand thirty. And the P O A, of course, just like the Sende framework, aim to reduce disaster risk and losses by two thousand thirty. And we have a number of targets. There are twelve of them in total. But the most important one that are very critical are related to disaster losses. And one of them is to reduce disaster mortality, reduce number of people affected and of course reduce direct economic losses. I will not talk about the rest of the target, but I will focus my presentation on the disaster mortality, which is better relevant to this discussion. Next, please. Next. Yes, and as I said earlier, my my presentation will focus more on the mortality aspect. Next. In in twenty nineteen, last year, we undertook a better comprehensive exercise as required by the African Union head of its state. They have given us responsibility to submit to the AU summit every two years the progress we are making on the Programme of Action. And due to other technical challenges, we could not have the report available for the past two years of the Sende framework, that is, two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. So what we did, we had to combine all the four years covering two thousand fifteen and two thousand eighteen. And what we got is that the disaster mortality has been increasing. In two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, Member State recorded about thirty-one thousand. And in two thousand seventeen, that increased to thirty-six thousand. There are a number of, I I do not have that aggregation. Most of these are, most of these deaths are resulting, you know, they they occur due to hydro-meteorological hazards. But we also recorded some epidemics. And quite strangely, we also recorded a number of industrial accidents that are growing. And I mean, that is also because of the urbanization rate on the continent is really moving very fast. And we we expect this kind of industrial accident to to be increasing more in the future. And again, there are also a number of challenges related to these numbers. One of which is that these numbers are quite conservative because Members State are facing challenges in collecting better comprehensive data. And that is something widely acknowledged by countries themselves. Many countries in Africa are these developing states. And you can only find sometime one is tough in the ministry dealing with disaster introduction, collecting data. So there are a number of challenges related to this data and it is quite really underestimated. Looking at these numbers in aggregation, that is about forty-seven deaths per day. That is a lot when it comes to, you know, natural related hazards. But again, some countries do not also report epidemics as disasters. For example, they don't report malaria as a disaster. Some don't report HIV as disasters. Some do report. So there is lack of uniformity in this in this regard. And it's something that we are working on with the countries. Other countries also report traffic accident. And for some countries, that is not a disaster. So these are issues, you know, definition of disaster also is becoming into play when it comes to different dynamics. Next, please. And as I said, in in general, the major causes of disasters drought, flood and epidemics. And of course, the urbanization, the way we plan our cities, the way we plan our human settlement is a major driver. Where these are that interact with the vulnerability conditions and they either they cause this. And it's also very difficult to, you know, to record mortality related to droughts accurately because of the the longer nature, the creeping nature of drought is is very hard. You don't know, at the end of the day, drought may result to malnutrition, but at the end of the day, you only record malnutrition that is related to malnutrition. So and and then you don't record it is related to drought. So this is, this is, you know, the difficulties related with with that. And a lot of work needs to be done to support our Member State in ensuring that they record the knock-on effects of drought. And as I said earlier, most disaster mortality in two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen were more related to industrial accident. The continent mortality over the four-year period indicate that the continent is making progress. It's not making progress. You would get actually from from that, that we are not making progress. But that could be sometime really quite misleading because sometimes you have one single hazard, like we had one incident, you had one thousand deaths. And sometimes you can just have one single event and that will result to, you know, the the whole deaths related to 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 target, target A of the Sende framework. But that does not mean that we are not making progress. It could be one single country that is just increasing that number. And again, it it can also be misleading because you'll be thinking that all countries in Africa are not making progress. There are a lot of them that are doing very well towards achieving that target. Next, please. And to be honest, most of these deaths are avoidable. They they can be avoided by having a number of system in place. One of them is to have standard for many streaming disaster is reduction and climate change adaptation in development programs. And this is something that can be factored in in investment. Countries have the tools, government have the tools to ensure that no budget should be allocated to development programs if it does not take into account risk reduction. They have that in their in their means and this could, you know, reduce deaths related to natural hazard to a larger extent. And again, having effective early warning systems is is also very important. In two thousand nineteen, last year, areas that were hit by cyclone, it died that had fire knowledge and they had to dispose. I mean, they 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 should position supplies and get evacuation better early, at a very low, very low rate of mortality comparing to to areas that did not do that. So an effective early warning system can reduce, can avoid, you know, this to another large extent. So with the effective D R M in streaming and all development process and also adding an effective early warning system, we can avoid this. We can, we can avoid avoidable deaths. It's something doable. Next. Well, I would like to reiterate again, I would thank to, you know, giving the African Union again this opportunity to join the network and to hear what we are doing with you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Gatschko Simon Kai. Yeah, thank you very much for your interesting presentation. I am very interested in, you know, natural disasters because we in Japan have lots of natural, not just, I shouldn't say natural disaster, natural hazards. So like earthquake and then tsunami and then typhoon, et cetera. And then, yeah, I am also very interested in how to reduce the damage from, you know, the natural hazards. So, yeah. So, yeah, this is very interesting. So how can we, you know, value or how can we measure, you know, the vulnerability in a proper way? So, yeah, this is very interesting. Okay, yeah, thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, so now, what time? We have four minutes for the break. So, what do you think? We have...
Yeah, we can have, we can have few minutes break. But I just want to thank all the speakers and also flag one thing that was not mentioned by Hidiyuki. Mr. Gauri Shankar actually survived a snake bite. So this is absolutely amazing when I read his article in one of the newspapers. He's not only an expert, but also an expert has experienced what a snake bite is like. So that's fascinating story. So thank you, guys. We can...
Yeah, I survived a king cobra bite with no...
King Cobra, yes. You can tell us a bit.
With no antivenom, yeah.
We have two, three minutes. If you want to share, I mean, this is fascinating.
Now, I will be sharing my snake bite thing in a TED Talk, so it will be recorded soon. Because yours is recording right now, so I don't want to dilute that. But yes, brief, I got bitten long ago when I was young and handling king cobra. Fortunately, it was a sub-little bite. It wasn't a proper bite. So there wasn't enough venom injected into my hand, so it wasn't sufficient to kill me. So I survived that bite. Now I'm here and giving a talk in the Indian, so it is avoidable, you see?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So Denise, how many more minutes have we got?
We've got about two minutes until the next session should be starting. So unfortunately, we've had to remove the tea break formally. But if anyone wants to quickly grab a drink, please do so. You've got two more minutes.
And also, if there are any questions, you know, we have Professor Jha. I think we also have Mr. Gauri Shankar. If there's a direct question you want to ask, I'm sure they'll be able to answer it.
I have a question to Dr. Shankar. Can I ask that question?
Please.
Yes, I already put my question to the chat box. Actually, extremely interesting presentation, Dr. Shankar. So my question is that, though I think this is a very basic question, but still I want to hear from you, how we do the estimation of the snake bite? And I'm also interested to know that how you do the category of the type of snake bite? How this process is going? Is there any methodology to identify priorities done by the physician after the patient is being seen by a physician? So that was... Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paria. I think the first question, it will be apt for Professor Jha to answer it because that they are the one who did the study. Professor Jha, are you around?
I mean, Professor Jha is not around. Usually, they do part of a lot of...
So I'll answer the second question. Yeah, second question. The first question, I'm sure it will be good if he answers it. So, yes, clinical symptoms are very important, but identification is a big problem. So for example, if it is a cobra bite, swelling and burning sensation is masked, like when you will have a burning sensation. So if you go to the hospital with this kind of symptom, the doctor would know. If you're lucky, if you're under a good doctor. So if it's a crate bite, for example, crates are nocturnal animals, so they are more active in the night. So when you get bitten by a crate, there is no symptoms, no pain, nothing, no swelling. So most of the people, the farmers, when they go to the field to guard their crop, they sleep on the ground. They get bitten by a crate, they don't wake up in the morning. The next morning, that person is dead. So that will be a serious issue to diagnose that particular thing. Most of them think it might be a cardiac arrest, but autopsy would reveal that there was envenomation. But with Russell's wiper, Sasquatch wiper and cobras, the swelling, you will definitely have burning sensation. And if it is a cobra, the neurotoxic, it's neurotoxic. So the ptosis, you won't be able to move your muscles, particularly your eyelids, you know? So think of that, and your heart rate will go up. And for Sasquatch wiper, there'll be bleeding in your gums. So these are the symptoms where we get to know that, okay, he has got bitten by a Sasquatch wiper, a Russell's or a cobra. That's how we diagnose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't think we have any more time for questions. But if anyone else has questions, please put them in the chat and we will try to get back to you. Shall we continue and introduce the next speaker, please?
Yeah. So we nearly come to an end. So we have two speakers and I will be chairing these two sessions. So our first speaker is Ms. Ashley Wolfington, who is currently the interim director of humanitarian programs at the International Planned Parenthood Federation in New York office. She has about fourteen years of experience in public health and communications. And Ashley has worked to promote comprehensive reproductive health care in countries across the globe through Africa, Asia, and the Middle East. Ashley's expertise lies in sexual and reproductive health and HIV, humanitarian and development programs. Ashley is particularly interested in elevating the voices of women and girls as well as amplify the needs of those affected by conflict, health emergencies, and disasters. And also IPPF has been my funder. So I'm so pleased that Ashley accepted our invitation. So Ashley, please present your talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the introduction and thank you so much for the invitation. I'm really happy to be here today to talk to you about an issue that is very important to me and is also something that I enjoy talking to people about. But I think is something that where there's relatively low awareness, I think, around the world about the minimum initial service package for reproductive health in crises or the MISP. So I'm really eager to be here to talk to you about how that is such a critical tool in helping to prevent avoidable deaths in humanitarian emergencies and particularly avoidable maternal and neonatal deaths. So I'm hoping to share my screen with all of you, which I'm going to do right now. And just to let you know, I'm also going to try to, in addition to sharing some PowerPoint slides with you, I'm also going to attempt to share with you a short video into little clips, which also helps to illustrate what the MISP looks like in practice and why it's so important not only to implement the MISP at the outset of an emergency, but why it's so critical to think about preparing for the MISP. I think the previous presentation from our colleague about disaster risk reduction, I just want to also illustrate that it's critically important that sexual and reproductive health, and in particular the MISP, be really integrated into disaster risk reduction plans and country-level planning for humanitarian emergencies. And also acknowledging that there are a diversity of expertise among the participants today and sort of interest areas. So I tried to find the right balance. So please forgive me if things feel either too basic or too esoteric. So I hope that you just, you walk away from the presentation with just at least an elevated understanding of what the MISP is and why it's very critical to thinking about and planning for avoiding maternal and neonatal mortality in emergencies. So I'm going to start the presentation with, by just sharing a little bit of basic information about the global humanitarian crises. And probably these statistics are known to most of you who are here because you are interested in disaster and humanitarian crises. But we have, these are some current or recent estimates. I don't think they're from this year. I think they're from last year. But we have close to seventy million displaced people worldwide. And, you know, among the people working in humanitarian emergencies, often we talk about this being an unprecedented time in our history of having people displaced around the world from a variety of different, for a variety of different reasons. And a lot of the people that are displaced are actually displaced within their own countries and not really looking, not really living in refugee camps like we're so used to seeing on the news. And those are also people that are in real need of humanitarian assistance. And included in this is the need for sexual and reproductive health services. I think when we think about humanitarian response, oftentimes we think about the life-saving needs in terms of shelter, water, and sanitation and, you know, response to medical emergencies like injuries. But there is also a real need for sexual and reproductive health services. And the reason why these are so needed and the reason why they're difficult to provide in these kinds of settings is because, as you can expect, there's breakdowns in the disruption in the normal health system and health services. And that means that people are often cut off from their normal provision or normal access to services. And then also, there are also a number of protective factors that also break down during all types of humanitarian crises, which also further exacerbate the needs and also the ability for communities and populations to respond and protect each other. So, and just to kind of underscore, some of these are probably obvious. But the reason why sexual and reproductive health is needed in humanitarian crises are because of the increased risk of all of those, the threats that are listed here. Rape and sexual violence, I know, is really top of mind in when we think about humanitarian crises and displacement. But there's also a number of other increased risks that I think are exacerbated by the disruption in services. Things like unintended pregnancy, complications during pregnancy and delivery, and inability to access interventions that we know are so, that are so effective in reducing risk of injury and death around pregnancy and childbirth. And just a statistic is that we know that sixty-one percent of maternal deaths that occur worldwide are occurring in these fragile and crisis-affected countries. So countries that are most vulnerable to humanitarian crises are actively engaged in a humanitarian crisis of one form or another. And I'm going to just show you a short video, which I think just kind of underscores just thinking about this from the perspective of, you know, what this means for women and girls who are particularly vulnerable during humanitarian crisis and why we really need to invest in sexual reproductive health and thinking about the vulnerabilities. Sorry if there's a question in the chat. Oh, five minutes left. Oof. You know what? I'm going to have to skip the video. I thought I had a little bit more time. So...
It's okay. Actually, you can. You can. It's all right.
Oh, I can. Okay.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
So I noticed, I'm so happy to hear that there are so many people here from India because this is actually a film that was made to highlight the need for the MISP in floods in India. So... So I hope you were able to see the video. It's just kind of gives you, you know, just a real sense of the difficulties that women will face when they are, they're pregnant and they're cut off from services and what that can mean for both for her, for pregnant women, but and in particular also for the newborn if they're not able to access care during labor and delivery. And then also the sort of the other threats to women and girls' health during emergencies is also elevated. So I think as has been discussed, whoa, I'm sorry. PowerPoint is not my forte. Is, oops, is we are all striving to achieve the Sustainable Development Goals and agree that sexual and reproductive health is a human right for all and it's also critical to achieving the STGs. So it's one of the things that's great news is that recognizing that there are these threats in emergencies to sexual and reproductive health and that there is, there needs to be a prioritized set of interventions that are introduced and provided at the outset of an emergency. There was the creation of the Minimum Initial Service Package, or MISP, for sexual and reproductive health. And these are priority interventions, again, that I mentioned, that are implemented on the onset of a crisis. And they clearly define what is most important to save lives at the outset of an emergency for sexual and reproductive health. And this is, again, a minimum standard for the response. And it's also a standard, a global standard across the humanitarian sector. So this gives you a snapshot of the six objectives in the MISP. And I'm not going to get into all of these right now, but just to say that this essentially says exactly what the life-saving objective is and then exactly what is meant to be provided to achieve that objective. So I'll just zero in, for example, on the one that was highlighted in the video, which is objective number four: Prevent excess maternal and newborn morbidity and mortality. And essentially, what this says is that we need to ensure availability and accessibility of clean and safe delivery, essential newborn care, and life-saving emergency obstetric and newborn care. So what this means is obviously, if possible, connection to comprehensive or basic emergency obstetric care. And when that isn't available, provision of what's called a clean delivery kit. And that is something that would be given to pregnant women themselves in the case that they have to deliver at home with a family member or given to somebody in the community that can help. And that is a very simple set of tools that are, that essentially help to prevent infection during... And that is a very simple set of tools that are, that essentially help to prevent infection during, during and after delivery. So it's quite basic, but it's, it's essentially meant, meant to reduce some of those key drivers of, of mortality right around the delivery period. So just to say the MISP is really meant to be provided right after the destabilizing event. So right after the onset of the flood or the earthquake, or if there is a rapid onset of, for example, some sort of conflict that causes mass displacement of people. And as you'll see over time, the MISP is meant to be replaced by or returning to relative stability and the, the reintroduction of comprehensive sexual and reproductive health services. So I'm gonna go, that's what I just described. So in terms of who developed the MISP, I would encourage you, again, for more information, to visit the, the inter-agency working group on reproductive health in crises, or IWAG. And this is a global coalition of organizations, multilaterals, and, you know, research institutions who have put together the MISP based, based on evidence and also based on practice in humanitarian crises over the past 25 years. So I would encourage you to go and visit that website if you want to learn more. And just a reminder that these, again, are the six objectives of the MISP and really focusing on immediate life-saving needs, preventing sexual violence by through provision, for example, of post-exposure prophylaxis for HIV and STIs, looking at a provision of emergency contraception and also provision of safe abortion care for people who are experiencing sexual violence. Prevention and reduction in morbidity and mortality to HIV. So this is through provision of, provision of condoms and also through safe blood, safe blood transfusion, maternal and neonatal morbidity and mortality, we all also covered. Prevention of unintended pregnancies is actually a new objective that's been added to the MISP, recognizing that the, the risk of unintended pregnancy is also a really big driver of unsafe abortion and excess, and excess morbidity and mortality in humanitarian crises and something that needs to be provided immediately in order to prevent that from happening. And then also the, the sixth pillar is really around the planning for comprehensive sexual reproductive health services. As soon as the emergency starts, we need to be thinking about transition to a longer-term, a longer-term strategy for getting back to normal and providing the full range of sexual reproductive health services. Just to give a snapshot, so this is just for IPPF, International Planned Parenthood Federation. We implement the MISP as part of our humanitarian responses and have been doing so. This gives a snapshot of the, the MISP responses that we have led from 2017 through June of this year. And these are mostly led by our, our country's member association. So the member associations who are, who are providing sexual and reproductive health services through their clinics in those affected areas. So those are the ones that we also work with on preparedness and planning and also to help build their skills to be providing the MISP in the case of an emergency. So this also shows you that the MISP not only can be provided anywhere in the world, but that it really has been provided across the globe. And in this is just the one, the, the MISP responses that IPPF has been involved in. But as I mentioned, this is a global standard. So this is also something that is being provided and being done in, in, in some of the places that you're working right now in, as a response to, to floods, to earthquakes, also to displacement of people, et cetera. Yes. So I think we're at time. So I'm gonna end it there. But just, and I will just say, I hope that you will take the time to also look through the slides that I was not able to cover, if you want to learn a little bit more about the MISP, including some tools that have been developed related to how we can be providing sexual and reproductive health services on top of the COVID-19 public health emergency that we're also facing. So thank you very much, and I will hand it back over.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you very much. With that note, actually, we have no more speakers, so we will be, so Dr. Khan was the last one. So what we will do now, we have discussions. So we will be inviting Mr. Mehdi Pat to, to discuss some of the things that he would like to as a reflective note on the speaker's talks. And Mr. Mehdi Pat is ADN's advisor and Mr. Pat is also the founding director of the All India Institute of Disaster Management. So Mehdi, over to you. Thank you.
No. Thank you very much for inviting me and I have been very, very eagerly listening to all the presentations that are done. We have short time, so I would like to share with you what I have picked up from these presentations so far. And I've picked up things in sort of two capacities. One, as a student of avoidable deaths, that if one has to learn more about avoidable death, what is it that one is learning? But I've also picked up things as a, not a professor, but teacher of avoidable death in a sense that if I had to give an assignment to somebody in my school, then what kind of things I would tell the school child or his family to do a project together. So probably sort of that, that in mind, Niveledaji and Hidayuki, I've taken up this particular presentations. The first and most important, the beginning that Hidayuki-san knew and Niveledaji used, you did about avoidable deaths and how it is a multi-sectoral aspect of that. The sort of intersectionality of various snake bites and million deaths and Planned Parenthood had this MISP. And so that, that is something which is very, very exciting for me, both as a lesson, but also as an assignment, that you know how many such intersectionality of avoidable deaths we can pick up in a disaster situation from time to time. So congratulations for that and thank you for, for sharing that. Dr. Ja was absolutely inspiring and I'm, I can't wait till he gets the Victoria Cross from the Canadian government for the work that he has done. I think it's a high, highest civilian honor that the government of Canada offers to its prominent citizens. What I found there as a good, good lesson as a student was to sort of find whom this further and see what are the million disaster deaths, looking at specifically disaster-related deaths globally or in India, depending upon. But that would be nice to see the last million disaster deaths and what happened and how they happened. I don't know the methodology, how we seek to track down, but that's something which would be very good as an assignment to take, take up with my students in my school, if I was a school teacher. And the second thing which I drew from, from his assignment, his presentation as a lesson is that, you know, each death must count. And that is, and not only count in terms of, you know, number, which obviously is very important in this data-driven decision-making that we are, but also how each death actually tells us so much about life itself. Not only life before death, but also life after death of the people who remain alive. So that's something I would, I have taken from Dr. Ja's presentation. Equally exciting presentation was from Gauri Shankar from the Kalinga Center. And then what was interesting for me is this whole risk, the interspecies risk that we saw, that most of the time in disaster studies, I get carried away at least, by sort of man-made causes of disaster, vulnerability, flyovers, urban planning. But there is also interspecies aspect of that. And it doesn't necessarily, is not understood, it's well-understood. Just that we have not addressed it adequately and therefore that is something that we need to look at more carefully. In a way, that was also the case in the last presentation, malaria-related presentation as well. But that's, that's something as a, both as a lesson and as an assignment. So thank you, Gauri Shankarji, for that. And I can't wait for the TED Talk that you gave about King Cobra Bite, that you survived. Thank God. Simon had excellent presentation about what's happening in Africa. And I'm so glad we were able to look at what's happening in Africa because very often, being from Asia-Pacific, it sort of gets somewhat under the shadow of more dramatic, more, more sort of attention-seeking disasters that we have. And to understand how disasters and deaths both are unfolding, unfolding. What I would like to do as an assignment with my students, if I had a school, was to see that what is the subcontinent studies? That, you know, if you have a continental studies, what is subcontinental, different parts of South part of Africa, northern, Sub-Saharan? You know, how that picture changes when you don't sum up all this together? And that's something I would like to know more. And something also about the long-term death or slowly unfolding deaths. The death which didn't occur immediately during a disaster or in a week or so, but you know, after three years, four years, a year after that. And how do we trace that, especially in Africa, is something which, which would be very interesting to look at. And I'd like to do that. Ashley was an absolutely very eye-opening, you know, what she described as esoteric part and then not at all, hardly esoteric at all, very central to disaster response that, that takes place, that is part of the humanitarian action, but also as a disaster risk reduction action. And two things were especially attracting as an insight. One is the disaster deaths after the birth, that, you know, how, how a new bird gets affected or sadly meets death during and after a disaster. And that's something, sort of separate out, it may be a small number, I think, I hope, but we don't, I think, at least I don't know enough about that. And second, the life-saving role of MISP. And as Niveledaji, you are specifically working with the Planned Parenthood. That may be something very interesting to look at across various disasters, that what has been the life-saving role of MISP, different continents, different disasters, different locations, different responses. So actually, thank you very much for that very useful presentation. Dr. Khan, it was good that you mentioned, so to speak, far-off places that one has been able to visit, such as not only Chittagong, but also Metro corner and other locations such as that, and have met actually people such as Prabhat Manikin and other family members of FIDS, as one would have in sort of various, various work-related visits there. And what I gained a new, new insight is the whole private sector, on one hand, it reaches and provides services where they are needed, disaster, non-disaster area times, but also how, if they don't, how do you control them so that you get the data? And more importantly, not only the data, but you make them far more responsible to make the disasters count and the, which Dr. Prabha Ja mentioned, and get the data, the details of that count as well. And that's something, the, the access to an ownership, to a use of the death data related to the private sector clinics and hospitals. And that serves a policy area that not only avoidable death network, but maybe UNDRR would like to look at more carefully in future. So that's the sort of my takeaways, both in terms of learning and my assignments for myself and my young students, if I find them. And would be, again, very much would like to thank Hidayuki-san and Dr. Niveledji. This was an excellent follow-up to what we had in India a few, a few weeks ago. And at that time, it seemed like a far-off thing, which when will we do and how will we do? And here we are, we've just done it. So congratulations to you. I can't end without mentioning something that, that Dr. Ambika Prasad mentioned. And that is about the whole aspect of COVID situation and how sort of disasters and epidemics sort of coincide and conflict and collide and sort of have a cascading effect as far as that is concerned. So I would underline that from his remarks, that how do we look at disasters, sorry, death in a conflicting or colliding disasters in future? Where several disasters happen simultaneously and that's going to happen, whether we like it or not. Sadly, the way we are leaving and developing our world economy and, and our planet that we are planning. Thank you very much. Arigatou gozaimasu.
Arigatou gozaimasu. Mehdi, thank you very much. And I think it's always, always wonderful to have you on board and hear your reflective insights, wisdoms. There's so much to learn from you. So thank you, guys. I think we don't have anything, I mean, I don't have anything from my side yet. I would like to invite Hidayuki back again and Hidayuki will run the poll again. So thank you.
Okay.
Please run the poll, Hidayuki.
Okay, right.
To see now, you know, to what extent we have managed to increase our level of knowledge and confidence on the topic of avoidable deaths.
Yes, okay, yeah.
So it's gonna take only a few seconds because it's only, only one question this time.
Yes, okay. Let me send the, okay, poll window to you. Now you can vote.
Now you can vote. Yeah, we need 80% response rate. 72%. What was the previous response rate to Hidayuki? I forgot. Was it 86?
I think more than 80.
We can wait for another few seconds. Okay, then in that case, we'll wait for a few more seconds. Nearly there. Come on, guys. Only a few seconds.
Yeah.
We would like to request.
Yeah. At least.
We would like to request, people who haven't done the voting yet, please do. So that we have a comparable data, at least. It's above 80%. So another 1%. Not moving. So.
Oh.
83%.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yeah.
It's brilliant.
Yeah.
It's very close, 83%. Okay. You can see the results. Fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a big ride, 65.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mehdi, you were saying something. Go on. Sorry, I didn't want to.
No, I did good job. That's, that's a good. No, I did a good job. That's a good, a big rise from forty-nine percent to sixty-five, the last category of very confident.
Good, thank you. And in the meanwhile, I have been just informed that you should have received an email and with a link to our feedback form. So there is a qualitative element to it. Please do fill the feedback form. And and it would be great, because we are not only assessing the impact of this special session, but also something to feed forward, to improve our delivery and content, and also in terms of selecting speakers. So thank you very much, and I think Hidayuki has only one slide, isn't it?
Yes, one more very important thing is please join the ADN today. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is, you know, ADN is open to any individual, so yeah, please join ADN today. And then also, please follow us, yeah, the Facebook, Twitter, and LinkedIn. Yes, this is our last slide, so. Yeah, thank you very much for your participation today.
And there is no no fees involved in joining ADN, and there is no fee for attending any of our special sessions in two thousand twenty-one. Knowledge is free. And it should, anybody and everybody should access knowledge, and that's what the principle of ADN is, and that's what we will continue to do. So please follow us. Thank you. And if there are any comments, we are happy to take one or two comments on board before we depart or disembark this session.
Right, okay.
We don't have anything. So once again, a big thank you to all the speakers from the entire ADN team.
Thank you. Thank you, Nivedita. Thank you.
And also, a big thank you to my ADN team, our ADN team, Denise, Ontra, Shazza. They've been really working hard. So, thanks.